Good evening, welcome to tonight's work session of the North Penn School Board. Tonight is our regularly scheduled work session. The meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the Board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the Board during the meeting. To ensure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the Board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for those who wish to speak to the Board, the Board President may ask an individual to yield the microphone, excuse me, to the next speaker. Okay, start with our pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which extends, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Tonight on our agenda is the strategic plan. So, Dr. Dietrich, did you have any comments or do you want to just?
I do. As we've discussed earlier in the year here, North Penn is now embarking on developing its next strategic plan, and a part of that is to gather input from our school board members as we put that together and then eventually bring it back for Board approval. We did start a process a few months ago where we were listing items that were of interest to various Board members and administrators, and we have a pretty comprehensive list. Naturally, when you have a long list like that, you need to prioritize. So tonight's activities involving the school board and administration will be that of prioritization. And we have Mark Warren, one of our Board members, who's going to lead us in this process. So, Mark, it's all yours.
Okay. I want to thank everybody for giving all their ideas in here. Now, we do have two members that came in after the fact, so if I get asked the Board, I guess, to think a little bit while I'm starting to move through this on how they kind of want to approach letting other ideas come in, there's nothing that's set in stone here, so anything that gets added in after the fact is perfectly fine. So what I'm going to walk through today with everybody is I have a really draft timeline of basically chunked out work that needs to occur, and that's what you're seeing on screen now. And that first bullet is the consensus on common idea groupings. So, to recap where we were before, on the initial presentation that we were doing is we went through the high-level workings of what the Board does in relation with the administration and how they work together. There's the strategic vision of the Board, there is the operational doing and execution of that work towards the goals, is what the administration does. So, the Board, a bunch of idea people, and the administrators get to do all the glory in the work, right? So, we did a brainstorming session the last time through, I think that was at the beginning of March, which led to this master table of stuff. We had captured some public comment stuff for items that were mentioned, and then across the top, we had columns for each of our Board members and participants. They kicked out ideas for things that they wanted to see happen in the next strategic planning cycle. And what I did was I collated those under some more common headings, which is what you see here. Now, this is just my take on it, and I put this out via email for the Board members to take a look at and review, and I assume and imagine that folks have come up with some feedback or ideas. I can't get it all to fit on one page. I was not, at the same time that I was doing this, Dr. Holman was also going through and taking a pass at it, and she did better. She got down to, she got down to six columns, and I'll make this a little bit bigger. And so this is going to be the main point of our conversation tonight, is basically the consensus idea of how we want to group together the items that we need to eventually vote on. So I'm going to jump back here to this set here, is once we get consensus on how we're going to group the items together, we were close in some areas, but because we had two different ways, both of them are valid, we just want to find out how the group wants to go. I then need, I'm going to transfer the final grouping into a tool, either a project management tool, I use something called Trello. It has some basic voting components, and also allows actually for some integrations with more extensive voting software like Survey Monkey. So if we want to get really crazy with some of the stuff, we might be able to leverage a third-party tool. And then we'll vote on the items that we're going to start working on.
Today we are going to take a peek at the chat.
And you'll hear over here, there's the video that I sent out that was a quick and cheesy how-to Trello. So the Board members got a chance to see if you weren't familiar with what Trello was. You'll see it here in a second, because I'll bring up my Trello set. But that's the main work that we're going to do here. We basically need to come to consensus on what these two groupings are. Let me see if I can make this bigger here.
Go to 100.
This one goes to 11.
I'm glad.
All right. How's it look back there for my press? Press corps, thumbs up? All right. We can share it out, too, so you can get the raw file. This isn't top-secret stuff here. All right, so here I've got Dr. Holman's thing. She's got it grouped into facilities, and she used the exact same raw text, it's just grouped under these headers, are a little bit different. All right? So she has it underneath Facilities, District Management, Instruction, Equity and Access, Student Supports, and Technology. I'll jump over to my headings real quick, some of them are very similar. From right to left, I have Organizational Change and Staff Dev, Community Outreach, District and Board Policy, New and Expanded Programs and Curriculum, which is probably pretty close to some of the words that you had up there, Tech Improvements, which is almost direct, Facility and Reno Projects, Climate Diversity, Mental Health Services, Security and Safety, and Special It. So, some, whenever you're doing this kind of exercise, it's tough to find out how granular you want to be, how narrow you want to divide some things down. It's possible that I could bring all three of A, B, and C together underneath one item, but that was just my take, and so I want to open it up to the Board here and give some feedback or thoughts.
And just so everyone's clear, particularly the new Board members, and perhaps were not at that meeting, and those that are watching in the audience this evening or watching at home, we did go around the table probably at least five or six times, and people offered, you know, inputs. It doesn't mean if there's a name attached to it, that, for example, I use myself, that those are the five things that Kurt Dietrich Superintendent has identified as the five most important items. It was going around the table, around the table, around the table, and there were times when, oh, mine was already taken, so I went to another one on my list. And that's the same for all Board members, so.
I'll go to that, I'll go to that raw file, so you can see exactly how that played out. Basically, we went left to right. So Mr. Scrock, he went first, and then Dr. Holman, and then Mr. Fusco. Wow. Mr. Fusco had a proxy, and so did Mr. Cat, or Casa. Jenna did a pretty good impersonation of you, Jonathan. And you'll see here, as we went left to right, everybody got one item as we went through, so we didn't want one person bogarting the entire conversation all the way through. So as we went, anything where we had a block or a dash is where essentially people passed, and they say either my ideas have been taken or I'm out. So Terry had some extended items, and then Dr. Holman and Dr. Dietrich basically went in around four and five of our idea draft, but everything's coming together. So, you see up here, one of the benefits of Google Docs, we're all collaborating, so you're all seeing this at the exact same time. Does anybody have any thoughts? I'm going to start actor with Dr. Holman's here, because she did a better job of getting it down into six silos.
That may or may not be better, depending on whether you think that's appropriate, too, so.
Yeah, I'm totally open.
I'm the visual learner. I had, I was trying to get it on one page, that was part of it.
I like it.
So, thoughts? Feedback on either one?
Really, I like it on one page. It's really the same data, and we've talked about this before in strategic planning. I don't mind how we're going to cut the pie, as long as it's in there. So I see a lot of the, this reflects a lot of these issues, it's a nice way to organize it. I'm fine using this moving forward.
Yeah, and really, the collation of the data is really just to get it into more manageable chunks for us to vote on, because if we were to vote on the body of what ended up being roughly 50 ideas, you would prioritize out things that clearly need to happen ahead of time.
Yeah, I get the sense that you have a better idea of how to group this, just given what you do on a day-to-day basis, so. Plus, it's one page. Which is good.
Just wondering, having just seen different strategic plans and how they put together, where, and this probably already happened, but the community, or just feedback from other stakeholders, teachers?
I think we did have community input at the meeting, correct?
Yeah, and so, to start all the way back, I think at the beginning, there's a strategic plan that is going to be written, and we are feeding in one aspect of it. So this is feeding into the strategic plan that this, that this group is building, the administration team is building. This is our input into it. The working session happened exactly like this, except I was up at the podium, and we had a lot more people last time than we did tonight. I bored everybody the last time we did this, and so only the press corps and a couple nice people showed up. We did get public comment, and that's what that left side down the way was, that's not to stop. It's, this is not a complete and final bedrock thing, so anything that comes in after, and it's especially important since we brought in you and Mrs. Ramich.
Is that what in the Excel sheet doc has some public comments in it?
Yeah, the raw tab has that column that came down the side.
So there's some actual specific feedback, actually, in that document itself.
Some of the public comment that I, there were, there were more, I only captured the unique items, things that were not covered in ideas that came through. When people came up to speak, they basically, we had a lot of affirmation of stuff that had already come up.
I wanted to note, it wasn't public, it was, there were teachers in the audience.
Yeah. Yeah, it was, all of the chairs were packed. It was, it was good.
And just, I was also appointed when we did this, so I was present at the meeting.
Oh, that's right, yeah. There was a lot happening that night.
She was great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was a lot going on.
I viewed the meeting online, so. I was present in spirit, and I thought that was great, there were so many great ideas that came out of it. I was trying to think back, because I feel like maybe a while ago, there was a strategic plan, and we pulled together, I remember coming together, I feel like it was at like Pinecrest Country Club, can, do you remember that? And it was a while ago. And I felt like there was, I mean, really, a lot of feedback from community members, not that you just had the, be at the Board meeting. I don't know what, I'm wondering what vehicles in the past have been used to gather information outside of the people that could come to the Board meeting? Just, just wondering. I remember that particular one probably a long time ago.
That one does date back some time ago. I had just basically come to the school district at that point in time, I don't remember exactly which year that was done. I do believe I was still Assistant Superintendent at that point, when we had that, but we did have folks that were either volunteered or did volunteer themselves to be on, a large group, there were probably 100 and 120 people at Pinecrest that particular day. So we had all sorts of different stakeholders represented in that process in that year. We did have an outside facilitator, there was a group that was used that helped with that whole strategic planning process when we did that one. Then after that, we had some additional strategic plans, all of those, of course, having, you know, an opportunity for public input at different junctures, as this one would also. So as we go through this process, we can invite public comment. We've also done surveys over the years, where we surveyed staff, we surveyed other community stakeholders, and asked them to give us input on certain things, too. So there are a lot of different things that we've done over the years. So that's all open for discussion, in terms of what we might do for the strategic plan. We got involved with this earlier rather than later with the school board, because we did have, now we have seven new Board members and two Board members returning that, you know, were very interested in giving some feedback in some direction with a lot of ideas, and we thought it would be helpful to get them involved sooner rather than later, and also to help everyone understand how things tie together. So, we're very open to that discussion also. You may say, for example, I've heard folks talking about full-day kindergarten, well, what's involved with that? And what are the other tentacles that kind of extend from a decision like that? So, for example, we would need to redo our curricular scope and sequence, because it's now written on the, you know, half-day model. And if we go to a full day, then it's going to need to have some things shifted, that we will now do in kindergarten, that perhaps we either don't do or we do in first grade. It may require moving some boundary lines, because there may be some buildings that simply don't have the space, and other buildings that have more space. So if there is redistricting or changing in boundary lines, you know, we can give you input on how long that takes and what's involved with that. That's an example of things we can talk to, you know, with you about when we look at any of these items. If you're, if you're looking for a little more input on what it might be before, you know, we do any kind of formal voting as a Board, we're very willing to walk you through any of these items and what's involved with it from our perspective.
I'll also mention, Dr. Holman and I were talking about when the delivery of the actual strategic plan is due. So it's due by October.
It's, it's due to the state by the end of November, but to do that, you have to, there's a 28-day public comment period that you have to back off the November Board meeting, which takes you probably to the Board meeting at the end of, the ECP meeting at the end of September, since we've shifted to the fourth Tuesday of the month.
Right. So because it's due in November, and there's a 30-day comment period, we need to, at minimum, try and have stuff in by October. You even want to do it before then, which is why we picked September, because we want some extra time. So even being conservative, by making sure that we get our feedback in, or our portion that informs that part of strategic plan, we had targeted July, mid-July. So if we're going to go with that particular plan, that still gives us, and that's what the rest of these bullets are, there's still actually a lot of time, because the hard part, the first part, was getting all the ideas in, and we obviously won't ever have them all, and we need to put in some others, so there's still time for all of that stuff. The second part is going to be voting in the different columns and getting that stuff in. So if, if everybody then is, is good in that, at least these headers, because then any new ideas that come in now will just get slotted underneath these particular headers and would enter the voting column in that way. So if, if we end up attending another, or setting up some other kind of public feedback area, and three more ideas come in, we'll just group them underneath one of these six headers, and then we can do another round of voting. Okay? So there's flexibility, built in. All right. It sounded like everybody, we had consensus, everybody liked this grouping that Dr. Holman did? Okay. So then the next step that I have listed up here then is, sorry, I have lots of tabs going on. Get them transferred into Trello. So let's, Trello is the thing that I chose. Has anybody, has anybody used Trello before? I know Jenna has. Well, okay. Our team, I forced Trello on our team when we were, when we were running for election, so at least five of us have. All right, so Trello, if anybody's done any kind of project management kind of stuff, I actually don't know if I can log in on, on the North Penn one. It's project management software, it's based off the Kanban concept, where you basically have columns, and you can put, if I was to go to a whiteboard and I was to write these things up as columns, I would write Facilities, District Management, and then each one of these items is going to get like a little post-it note or an index card. That would be the old way that you would do a Kanban board, right? And then you would write down, people would give feedback, and everybody would go up with their post-it notes. Trello was a digital version of that, and it allows everybody to collaborate at the exact same time, the way that we're doing Google here. It also allows for technology integrations, to put like due dates, assigned work out, so it's a project management tool, is essentially what it comes down to. And I figured Trello would be good for our group here, because it has some basic voting options, there's plugins that you can install, so that when we're, when I get all the cards created, I'll, we'll just let the team go in and start clicking on things that they think they want to prioritize. Once we have those voting items collated, and everybody has their pictures and stuff up, excuse me, their votes, you can just work right inside those cards, because they essentially become like mini-documents, and they add in work notes, and you can communicate back and forth with each other. So it keeps all of our stuff in one place without having to jump around. I mean, Google's great, but in this particular case, we're going to bring stuff in. You can also integrate Google Docs with Trello, so if we have this particular document, that'll be linked on the Trello board, and you can just click on that, and it'll go out to Google Docs. Okay? Does anybody have any issues with, without, actually, I know, I'm not going to run you through a Trello demo, but does that sound okay? Yes?
If you need help, if you want, I can use your system.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's also what makes Trello good, is it doesn't front-load the work on all one person, because we can all be actively in there all at the same time. So it's not something that I get dumped on, which is good.
Can you take those bubbles and order copy of it?
Actually, you can. You, as long as I'm able to, so what I would do is I would probably set my Excel sheet to this format, and then copy and paste all the text out of there, and yes, it will create cards based on carriage returns. It's pretty smart. Trello's pretty sweet.
Price is right, too.
Yeah, it's free. Free is good. There's stuff to pay for, and I actually, I pay for it, because you get extra due ads, but, okay. So no arguments there. Look at that, we're halfway through the list. We've come to consensus, and nobody lost any teeth yet. All right, so let's then, I think, talk about the voting process and the metrics. So this one is, is where it's going to get a little bit dicey, in that Trello doesn't support weights or any of that kind of stuff. It is a very lightweight and simple, almost a dot-voting kind of thing, where you're going to go in and you're going to click on a, on a card, and it's going to put your picture on it, which is indicative of you liking that. So you have one thing. So, how do we want to either break ties, or how, how to, how many votes do we get? We're going to have to self-regulate, we're going to have to rely on people to say, I'm only clicking six times. There's no vote stuffing here, Jenna. Can't put, no vote block stuffing. Any ideas on, on how we want to wait stuff out? Some other conversations have been around, you know, we're around education, do, does stuff that helps classrooms and teachers have more weight? Does facilities have more weight? Because you can't teach if you don't have a school. You could probably argue many ways. What are people's thoughts?
So flip back to the graphic. So you're asking, like, within facilities, or?
Right.
Somebody might say, okay, in facilities, I think, summer interns are most important out of all the things at facilities, and yet, when I look at, other than, I think instruction is more important than, in fact, there are three things under instruction I would put ahead of my one thing in facilities that's most important to me, and then like, you know, is that what you mean, or what do you mean?
Yeah, I would say there's, as my friend Matt would say, there's a couple ways to skin the cat. The reason why we chunked it down to these smaller areas is so that it's easier to prioritize, and then even still, let's say that the top three items in facilities, and then there's the top three items in district management, it's not like we have to exclusively only do one. There are lots of people in the district and the administration, you'll be able to pick up several concurrent projects. The trick is how, and mostly I think that's going to come from the administration, is to say, I have the resources to handle this amount of work. And that's the conversation that has to eventually happen. We're trying to get to that core conversation of, the Board has the vision to accomplish X, the administration has the resources to produce X. Where do they come together?
Isn't that a bi-dimensional matrix we can make, actually, an X and a Y?
Sorry.
And the administration can go through that exercise on some of these, your resources versus your priority, and so you're able to plot that?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, and I think you might have done that at the, at the strategic planning, you were, you went through some of those exercises? I wasn't at that one. But do you know what I mean, though, by that XY, and then you plot the resource versus the importance? And, I mean, that's a simple way of graphically representing, but being able to plot more than two data points.
Yeah.
And then combining that later.
Or we do this on a two, kind of two-tier thing, where we break it down within each category, prioritize. Do we first prioritize it within each category, and then go through again and prioritize in general?
And just to get a little more complicated, Dewey, the one thing I didn't get to thinking about with this was, what are the interconnections?
Right.
Because you may have interconnections across categories, so for instance, just to go back to full-day kindergarten as an example, you know, you may say, full-day kindergarten's my top priority, but if redistricting is at the bottom, and you can't do full-day kindergarten without it, that's going to be a problem.
Right. So that...
Does Trello allow us to make those interconnected?
Sort of kind of. The easiest way to kind of handle that, and that's something that I've, we've gotten to the point where I was going to bring something like this up. So sorting them into the columns, right, putting them into bubbles is one thing. Those are the column headers. There's also tagging that you can do, you can make as many tags as you want, and then you can start applying tags to certain things. So the first pass, my recommendation or thought was going to be, the first pass is going to be, what is important? The second would be, come from where some of these extra tiebreakers come from, complexity is the thing that Dr. Holman's talking about. Some ideas are more complex than others, some cost more money. We may end up getting to the point, full-day kindergarten is a perfect example, that is a behemoth project that has many component parts. It may be worthwhile instead to say, we know that we want to accomplish full-day kindergarten by 2019. And, there's pie in the sky, that's, I'm just, when you're project scheduling, it's a lot easier to pick a target date and work your way backwards, find out what it would take for you to get all that work in, if you break full-day kindergarten down to a bunch of component things of curriculum, bus scheduling, class sizes, professional development and training, those items become a lot more easier to actually become cards and stick, and then you just have them grouped together, collated as dependent or working towards full-day kindergarten. Okay? In those cases, it makes them equivalent to the other cards, that's really, we're reducing fractions, right? You've got whole numbers versus fractions, and some of the work that's in here is fractional work, and some of it is whole. And so full-day kindergarten is a whole number, and we need to break it down and make it equivalent.
So, philosophically speaking, would it almost make more sense to make full-day kindergarten its own bubble? Like its own?
Full-day kindergarten is a project, is definitely a project unto itself, it is an initiative, and if...
I mean, and even grouping some of the...
Yeah, a lot of them are like this, yeah. So that might be a first pass, maybe size.
I'm just wondering if, while full-day kindergarten is a project in and of itself, it can still be as part of the strategic plan within one of these components?
Sure.
So, I don't know that, I mean, it's just my opinion, I don't know that it has to be its own bubble as much as it is one of the largest projects within instruction. It's, it's more of an action than it is a goal. I mean, it's still a goal, but it's, it's more of an action, I was thinking, so I, I don't know. Diane, when you were...
Well, that's what I was going to say, is that comes, I was having the same kind of thought. That comes down to whether, when you're writing the plan, similar to the conversation you and I were having earlier tonight, is the goal full-day kindergarten, or is the goal improving early learning, and then full-day kindergarten is a strategy you're using to get to the goal of improving early learning? You know, and that's kind of a decision that you have to make in terms of the structure of your strategic plan. You can have lots of actions, but what overarching goals are they serving?
That's, that's, I was digging them out of my bag when you were asking about the strategic plan, because they gave me a copy of the strategic plan that we had before, and it's on my desk, I took it out, because I was working on stuff, so it's at home. But that is the way that it's currently set up, is there are X-goals, here are the strategies that we're going to use to meet those goals.
So to get to the goal and the action, this is, like, this is the great kind of start to that, right? But there is a lot here, and just, this is a five-year strategic plan? Three-year? So three-year, not, yes. So I'm even wondering, within this, we keep the bubbles, but we take the three action items, so full-day kindergarten may be one of them, two to three that are priorities, and so that those kind of, that we lead first, because I think, you know, I think, like a full-year school schedule may not be something that we could implement in three years, but it's on the list, but, so maybe it gets rolled down as a, we're going to do studies, or we're going to look at what other districts are happening, you know? And so we...
That's the, that's the fractional component breaking up of those larger items.
But we take, because I think that, we've heard, you know, several times from administrators that they're really looking for us, for us to communicate what the priorities are. So I think trying to take from our fantastic brainstorming, where we got so many great ideas out, like the three top priorities, then we then begin to work to say, okay, what is the overarching goal that is attached to full-day kindergarten, like Diane was saying, and then work our way kind of into that. So take, maybe, I think that would be helpful, I'm hoping, to administer, like what I'm hearing people saying, that we take out what maybe within this are the three things that we want to accomplish to really make sure that we achieve within the three-year strategic plan.
Totally with you. And it's, it's incredibly and extraordinarily... Totally with you. And it's incredibly and extraordinarily important, but this is why it was really, it's one thing to collect ideas. We need to pin it to something. The strategic plan is perfect because we're supposed to be, on the board side, providing vision leadership to say, "We envision the district going to X, being a leader in mental health awareness, or being a leading-edge area for full-day kindergarten." Whatever that vision is, there is work that administrators have to do to help us get there. So anything that we write here ideally is pinned to one of those goals and becomes a strategy. So that would be one of the labels that we would pin to it, so that you can drive that down. And we are not going to do everything on here in three years. That's not what this exercise was either. This exercise was to understand the body of work that is in front of the administration that people would like to see happen, and then prioritizing it down, and at least getting it on a schedule so it's not lost.
Does it make sense, within each of the bubbles, because, you know, to take it from that brainstorm or the free flow of ideas down to beginning to look at what is, what are both our priorities of the tasks or the items listed within each of the bubbles? Does it make sense for us to, I mean, maybe Trello will allow us to do that, where we kind of place a priority. So my top three within district management would be X, and we kind of look to see where everyone's feedback kind of falls, and we begin to kind of maybe change the order of the list to let some of those, the bigger ideas emerge from that.
I think we could probably not gain the system, but I think we could set it up so that, the way that the voting would be, if you get, three plus two is five plus one, if we get six votes, and you give three votes to your top, and two to your second, and one to your bottom, then, I haven't actually tried this out, but you should be able to filter by a person, and you would be able to see their three votes.
I was even going to ask, is that something for Survey Monkey that's a little bit more efficient?
And that's, again, too, that's also why I brought that up, because there's going to be limitations on the Trello side, because it's meant to be just simple and raise your hand, but Survey Monkey is likely going to provide something more complex.
And that'll, that can spit out an Excel sheet, and you could, you know, cross-tab all you want at that point. So do I have this, so would each bubble maybe be like Survey Monkey?
I don't know.
Item that, well, then you go through your scoring, say, for facilities, here, take your six votes, here's every topic, each board member votes. I'm, perhaps I'm oversimplifying, but I'm trying to find something that advances the process.
It, I think it would ease to start simple, and then I would like to simple first, and then start to move into granularity. Because otherwise, we might get too bogged down. But I am totally with you. We definitely need to...
And I just think we then kind of remember, then, that some of the things that are listed, like, I don't think any of us are going to vote under facilities as redistricting being our top priority, but we, like, we go forward with this with the understanding that it could be linked to, to something else, you know? Like, we might, and we may want to see the athletic fields first, and then, you know? So just, if we all go into that with that awareness, then I think that will help, to make sure that some things don't get knocked off, or that they're linked to others.
May I ask a question from others who might have been involved in this step process, where it's almost like a super-diligent issue, where, okay, we've got six bubbles, we each go through Survey Monkey, but it could be, you know what, every single person has their three topics, that this is what you really care about as a board member, seeing accomplished, and you can tag something with that, and it puts some extra weight to it. Or at least you're able to share with others what your priorities are. I'm not sure how you reconcile that, but I'm trying, I think you bring up a good point, so that we don't get the individual priorities and what we are here for and stand for are integrated into the process.
I think, just having been involved in some of the process, is that what we're going to need is that feedback, I think, from Diane and Kurt in terms of where we are with some of these things. Because some of these items, we may already be on a path towards them. Like, I'm looking at technology, and I'm sure, just from conversations, that there's more things to even be added to that list. But we're already on a path for some of those things, but maybe we haven't actually reached it. Like, you know, if you were talking about part of our last strategic plan, you know, we knew it was, they knew it wasn't going to get done in three years, but perhaps we're like year two for that. So that's kind of another component. So I think some of the grueling part of it is going to be really those conversations with Diane and Kurt, and the feedback of kind of like, this, which Diane, you've already kind of started it for us, right, kind of grouping things for us and thinking about what's linked together. So I think some of that...
Is that something that can be communicated through Trello, where we're getting, like, sort of a update on some of these in terms of those tabs for notes?
Yeah, I mean, the structure, the data structure itself hasn't been built. It's just, it's columns and then tags are the baseline stuff. So whatever makes sense on how to group stuff up.
I'm actually almost asking that to Diane and Kurt and whatnot. Like, is that something that's realistic, that you could provide on a format like that? Just sort of bullets in terms of, okay, well, and, you know, the website, here's what's been done so far, you know? And give people a sense who don't know where we're at in the progress of that particular goal?
Well, it's very, very important to me. It's important to all of us administratively, that you make informed decisions. So if you're not informed about something, how can you make a good decision? So we want to be able to help you to understand each of these items and say, "This is where we are, and this is what, you know, we were thinking, where we're headed," that sort of thing. You might say, "Go, go, go," or you might say, "Proceed with caution," you might say, "Stop, it's not, it's not a good idea, we just don't support that." Generally, I think we do better when we're able to talk, because they're questions, and we think we're capturing it, and then somebody else reads out, "What do they mean by that? I don't understand this, and I still have this question." So it's easier for us, if we can just talk about the main ones, for us to tell you where we are.
It's, I absolutely prefer to talk and learn, have that exchange through this process. What I wonder is, you know, I'm looking just in one bubble, and we talked about the Survey Monkey and board members, directors being able to, Terry, directors? I got it. Yeah, I'm getting mentored. But wanted to point that out. So on the one side, we have, maybe what our directors see as priorities, but even to have that, I'm thinking back in my case-management days, where even a score one through three, one meaning that we're close, two, we're actually doing it, three, not at all. On that right column, the administration at least gives us a quick, you know, we see where it's at progress-wise, so we understand, to your point. And that might guide our questions as individuals or entire board to ask.
And the other piece is, when you're thinking in terms of, is this a year-one topic, is this a year-two topic, is this a year-three topic? That kind of information might help. If something's two-thirds of the way done already, it might have a little bit more priority than if it was a year-one topic than something that hasn't been started at all, you know? It may depend. Because that's going to be the other piece of this, of course, is, I've been down the road of strategic plans where everything is booked to start year one.
Everything's priority.
Exactly, and it's just not physically possible. So that's going to be the other piece of it, is when we settle on what are the pieces, what's the timing of each of those pieces as well?
And I think another kind of thing to consider to that point as well, is that there are topics on this issue, on this document, where great efforts have already been made, but problems can't be solved by one or two things. Like, I'm really thinking about mental health. So I think that by, and I even think technology. Like, you can do a lot of things with technology, but there's something that you always have to do to keep up. And so recognizing, so some of this, I think, would be just keeping us up to date on what's happened, or, you know, what's working. And I think we're, you know, that's coming out through meetings already, you know, thinking about, you know, Jenna's mental health presentation at the ECP committee meeting, and then, so knowing what those interventions are, but then knowing what is next for the next three years, too. So recognizing that one strategic plan isn't going to fix an issue. It may be something that'll have to be addressed ongoing.
I think we should also have your, I think we should also have your, the administration's complexity weight and desirability weight in there, even if it's two separate ones. Kind of what Jonathan was saying in a high resource, low value, high value, low resource, whatever. Using, incorporating that information into how the board members want to proceed, knowing, you know, the complexity of it, or whatever, the direction's coming from us, we need to know what you need as well. So I think that your comments in on that, looking at it, like, when we go back and vote separately, put our six points in there, or whatever, if you would look at it that way, and then we look at it however we're going to look at it, and then combine them weighted.
Okay.
Yeah, the more we talk, the more, I don't think there's any other way around it, but to go through these, point by point, and give you some sort of a high-level, at least at the minimum, summary of what's been done so far, where we are. We've touched it at all, we haven't looked at it one bit, we're far along in it, whatever it might be, and tell you in a few sentences what we've done, or perhaps a couple paragraphs, you know, but we can't get into super detail on all of them, we'll never get through them all. But you need some discussion, you know, and I think that would be helpful, so.
Okay, so...
So Mark, are we using the Survey Monkey or Trello, or both?
I don't think we're there yet, and this is actually where I was going to go. I think the, what we're, all the discussion I think that's happened is we started, I think, down at the Trello, we were putting a cart in front of the horse. We were ready to start getting to work. We don't, we don't know what to work on yet, is part of the issue. We know we have some ideas on things, but we need to, of the larger short items, we have to shake the box of Legos and get out all the big blocks first, before all the little tiny pieces. So what I think I heard, and this is what I'm going to check with the stuff that I was writing down here, is that the first, the first sort is actually a current state sort that says, "Here's where we're at with near, far, near, close, almost there, not there, whatever." Right, the one, two, three. Okay? That will then come along with whatever little summary paragraph write-up that you guys, or the administration crew puts next to that. The second one that I was hearing kind of danced around, but wasn't actually mentioned here, on this list, well, we kind of mentioned a little bit. Mrs. Ramich, and I think Ms. Key, we were talking about there are larger items, there are ideas, mental health. That's on here, or at least written on one side here, like, gender violence and victimology training is fairly specific, but staff to link school and community supports is not as specific as it could be. So the thing, the note that I wrote down here was, is the item as written actionable? And if not, you need to break it down into some actual component parts. And if that means that, you know, full-day kindergarten is a perfect example, right? Full-day kindergarten is not actionable. I can't wake up tomorrow and buy full-day kindergarten off the shelf. I need to figure out the parts that come with it. So that second sort is, those are the two main big sorts. Where are we with stuff now? And the second one is, is it actionable? And if not, all the actionable things will go in one bucket. All of the things that need to have actions created for them will have to go in a second bucket. And then, once we get to that step, we'll have to figure out if there's a priority on items that have, that have to have actions created for them, if we need to dedicate resources to start breaking that down. Full-day kindergarten is going to be one of those. You're going to need to see when each of those things come out. So we'll need to either put up working groups, we'll have to figure that out. That'll be one of the things, how we're going to accomplish that task is what we need to figure out there. So I would say that those first two items, once we get that, then we'll have a much better idea of how we need to organize the data structure, of what Trello might look like, how we'll actually get to voting, and we can work on that simultaneously. We can think about the weighting is, the complexity structure. Because the complexity, time duration, financial resources, all of those things are important when you're actually doing a vote. To say, if we can get into Survey Monkey and we have component parts, you know, one through five, or one through three, tell me how long you think this is going to take, one through three, do you think it's going to cost a lot of money? That will help build some of our weights at a more granular level. I see, I see nodding heads. Yeah, and that's the kind of thing. When we do those votes, it's not going to be something, it'll be, it'll be a survey. It'll go in, and you'll do it individually. So it'll happen offline, and then we'll collate, we'll come together in a meeting like this, and we'll put presentations out to say, "Here's what the results were," and then we'll talk about it. Okay, it's eight twenty-six. I have eight thirty as a cap, but go ahead. Yes, Madam President?
So where are we going from here next? We're breaking these down into actionable items.
Yes.
Who's going to do them?
So the first action item of current state definitely belongs to Dr. Dietrich and Dr. Holden. That's the current state one.
But I think what I heard, though, is that the board would value some discussion about them, rather than us trying to take a stab at writing something that you don't necessarily understand what we meant by whatever was written there. So I think...
I also, would you go back one mark to your agenda? I was going to say that, however many decades ago that was, I really did value that. I mean, it was memorable when it was at least a decade ago. I do think just making sure we're reaching our stakeholders, because that's been, I think, something that really, that this board has valued thus far. So one thought is, and I don't, do we work with Hanover as a, do we have?
We have not at this point.
We have not worked with Hanover. So, and Hanover's just another way of gathering information. You can do surveys. Some districts have subscriptions to them or with them. But just another way for us to be able to tap into some of the untapped resources and stakeholders. I wonder if that's something that could happen simultaneously? We may get, and I suspect we would, get a lot of duplicate ideas, but we at least would be very transparent in being able to say that, like, we want feedback from our stakeholders in terms of...
Well, and I was thinking, as you were, as you were speaking, at some level, after we've done a couple of the preliminary sorts, do you even just put out some kind of survey, that these are the things that are floating to the top for us? How would you rate them as a community, and do you have any other additional ideas that you want to share?
That's exactly what I was, I mean, I don't know how anyone else, what anyone else thinks of that.
Timeline-wise, I'm not sure having a big event is going to be a problem.
I wasn't saying necessarily a big event. That's why I was, I think we're past the big event. That's why I was thinking maybe the survey, and was wondering if we had a subscription to Hanover, or if we could, we could use a Survey Monkey, or some other...
Google forum, something.
Some other vehicle for, and I like that language, even this is what's floating to the top for us, but...
And Diane, I was actually, I have it saved. I just got a Survey Monkey from my old California school district, doing exactly this. So if you want to see it, I'll send it over. But, yeah, we can do something like that easily.
Okay. So that second bullet, as I copied down here, that sounds like something that people are on board with, that once we do the initial sort? That we put it for double comment. Go ahead.
I don't want to jump ahead. If anyone wants to comment, I wanted to make sure we answered Dr. Dietrich's question about the discussion. I still wasn't clear on that for process. Felt that maybe we want to end up with that, you know, one, two, three, but maybe in that process, that, as you said, we merge that, and it's, you know, you take a minute explanation on each one, and this is why we arrived at this. So at the end, we might have that scorecard, so to speak, but we've had some, some actual discussion, and not just the scores first. So is that a separate meeting? We have to carve out two hours?
Probably is.
Yeah.
The other piece is, of course, if we do that, I don't know how much discussion we have to have around things that we have not worked on at all.
Right.
The majority of the discussion's going to be around things that are at some level of implementation.
The answer is, we haven't done them. Okay, next one. Some of those are, you know, they're going to be passed, right?
Is the first sort then actionable, non-actionable? And then, then a conversation on the actionable ones while people work on the, is that, does that sound correct? Because there's a, if we do it the other way, if we just open up either this and say, "Okay, let's talk about the ten-year improvement plan." Or, you know, "Let's talk about community, community input on fiscal priorities." That's not actionable. There's not, you can talk about, you know, buckets. So the first step then, I guess, is actionable, non-actionable. That's something that can be done offline, so we can split that out.
An awful lot of inactionable based on that way of defining it, looking at this list at the moment, there's a lot of sort of danger up there.
My question would be, do we want to spend time on developing action, turning something into actionable if there isn't an interest in the majority of the board in pursuing it?
And so that, I think, that's why that sort is so important, is it becomes actionable, non-actionable, and then, okay, let's look at the things that have no actions right now, and prioritize those real quick, and say, "Okay, let's spend some time breaking out the parts." Does that sound like the good course of action? So initial sort on actionable, non-actionable, and then a prioritization on items that should get actions?
Sure. I'm still not clear, though, on who's going to do, who's making it actionable, non-actionable, like Diane and Kurt going through everything?
What do you guys think?
And then we haven't... And then we haven't.
I'm, it was my initial solution to try and leave meetings without action items.
To do what?
Try to get out of meetings without action items.
Or are we supposed to all be voting on?
I, so this was the trap I walked into last time. I think it would be easy for me to walk through and pull out ones that are actionable.
Kurt also brought up the point we were discussing earlier about having some sort of update on, on what all of these, like where we are in the scope of these projects too. Where does that fit into this?
That comes after. I mean, actionable, because, because it, you can't, you can't, where are we on something that has no actions? Because you don't know, like, I, I can't ask them where they're at with.
But might that help inform some of these that are a little vague, but only maybe vague because of the way they happen to have been condensed into this bubble? You know what I mean?
That's why splitting them out, that's why splitting them out in actual, not actionable. And then when they, when we have the ones that have no action, that's.
Then we have that discussion. So, okay, what do we do about these? Not just to scrap them, but to say.
But some of that, I think, comes also with reframing. So the way that redistricting is listed as the first on facilities, you know, it could be reframed as redistricting as required, you know, for other requirements.
Are you talking about full redistricting? Are you talking about redistricting to meet another need?
Yeah, so I think some of it's just the way, it's the way that, that, like, the way that they've been captured on this and so it's just, it's.
So that's why I kept the raw, the raw data is still there. So, because I know that redistricting was not actually something that sat down and said, today, I'm going to draw some new lines. It was actually something that was in support of, we have to think about this if we want to do something else. So the raw data is still there. So if you're looking at this and it is, it was paraphrased by Dr. Holman, some of the stuff that I did was to paraphrase, and I might read it a different way, which is why the raw. And even I was the one that captured it, so I might have missed something. Which is why I put everybody's name next to the raw data thing, so that we could go back to that person and say, hey, Mark wrote this down, is that what you meant? And you can say, yeah, no, he's bad at typing, I meant this, and then we fix it. Okay? So I tried to keep traceability and all that stuff so it wouldn't get lost in paraphrasing. Okay, so all the way back to Tina's question. Who is going to do the sort on? Who is going to do the sort on actionable, non-actionable? Is it better suited on the board side? Is it better suited on the administration side? Is it good to have representation of one from each side?
Yeah, maybe a small working group on that or something.
Okay, do we need a, do we need a working group to sit around? Do we need three to four people? Three to five? Let's do odd numbers so we don't have hanging, uh, deadlocks? You know, I'm anti-deadlock.
I think we'll do it with three.
Okay, let's do three. Less is better. Do we have three volunteers? Tina's one.
I'll go.
Mrs. Ramich. Well, we need, we need admin, so we're going to have to. We need at least one admin representative.
I think Diane and I will definitely do it from admin.
All right, so that's, so three board, two.
Three board and two admin. I'm going to write it down, it's happening. I saw Mrs. Stoll, I saw Mrs. Ramich, and then Mrs. Gee and Fusco are going to have the thumb wrestle.
So, um, I'll let Christian, his thumbs look much stronger than me and it's PSSA month, so.
PSSA month. You've got nothing to do in this, right? All right, so then it's Mr. Fusco. And then Dr. Holman and Dr. Dietrich, Dr. D. Okay, so we have five people that are going to do an initial sort on actionable, non-actionable. That's all you have to do. You don't have to come up with actions on the other ones. Extra homework, you know, if you have ideas, you can write them down. But your only deliverable is two lists. Things that we can do right now, things that we need to prioritize if we should do. That's it, no other prioritizations. Okay, when is that due?
When's the next work session?
Mr. Scraggy. Calendar, calendar foo.
May eighth?
May eighth. You guys need till May eighth?
Um, I actually won't be here May fourth through the eleventh, so.
Well, you don't have to be here for the presentation side, you just have to deliver it. That's what I was asking. It needs to be delivered for that meeting. Yeah, you guys could be meeting before that. What's that? Yeah, but she doesn't have to be here, there'll be, there'll be three other people to do it. Yeah, redundancy.
While we're looking, people thinking about a date, though. Format-wise, it's, we're still taking each bubble and within each bubble will, or we'll go by each category of what is actionable and what is not. Are you just dumping two lists?
I, I like that, I think that's good. I think if you sort within, if you sort within its bubble, if you sort within the bubble, just to maintain that.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that make sense, what we just said there? Okay.
At this, are we, all we're really doing is saying, the way this is written, it needs to be more explicit. That's it. We're not saying how it should be more explicit, just that this is a little vague in terms of its ability to be acted upon.
Yeah, if you want me to do something about it, I need something to do.
As a, as a whole group, we're going to say, okay, so how do we identify this as something we can act on? Is that the idea?
Right.
And the small group is just saying, this needs more development.
Right, so the, the first thing that's happening is you're going to take out things that are defined actions. Like I could say that I, one of them is something that I can do. And then there's going to end up with a, a pile of, of ones that are nonspecific enough that I can't just make happen. So I need to break those down into, in order to accomplish this idea, I need to do these three things.
That's what the working group is going to be tasked to do.
Not yet. The very first step is just to split them out, just to split them out, right? Now, because there is a larger conversation of the paraphrasing that happened, right? Dr. Holman paraphrased, I paraphrased a little bit. And when we had that conversation, if, I think if we keep them in these ideas as they are right here, and then what Dr. Holman was saying, then we look at those as a body and say, why waste time on, I'll pick on online snow days? Does that even sound like something that we can do in the next X years? And if somebody says, well, we would need, just off the top of my head, uh, six things, whereas something else might be less complex. That's the kind of conversations that we'll have on the, once they're in those areas. So we won't spend as much time on online. It's not going to go away, it doesn't get kicked.
I understand that, I just, yeah, I'm just trying to figure out the order of operations here. More than anything, like, this working group is, because if all we're really saying is, well, this is the way it's written, needs some more attention, we'll put it back to the large group. I mean, couldn't we even just do that, like, via email or something?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm talking about. That's what I was asking, if, do we need to the eighth to do that? Is the split enough that's going to happen? And then what we're actually going to come back with is the prioritize stuff. Because once that split happens, then we can take those items and put them into Trello and people can prioritize that way. It doesn't have to be a single vote. We can, we're going to have to go through, we're going to have to, we're going to have to iterate on this. So if, how about that? Does that make a little bit more sense then, Christian? It seems a little bit more actionable, because it sounds really easy to just say, take these things and split them into two, and we'll see you next month. So if we can get those split into two and then I'll transfer, some, one of us will transfer the information into Trello and then we can have prioritization, then the next time that we come here and meet on the eighth, it'll be around the conversations of those items. Does that sound right? And realistic?
So then the, the group should try to meet sooner rather than later, then share back with the group.
The sorting group needs to be.
Well in advance of the May eighth meeting, so that then you have time to Trello it?
Yes. The data migration, once you give me the list, that's going to be a piece of cake, that'll be like an hour.
Okay.
Yeah, so of the three steps that I'm, that I think I hear now, and I will summarize this and I will send this out to the board with the stuff that I wrote. The first step is going to be, the gang of five is going to get together and do the actionable, non-actionable sort per bubble. So each bubble is going to have two columns. Once that gang of five declares the bubbles have all been split, the non-actionable list will get transported into Trello and people will then prioritize and vote. You okay? Yes, I'm trying to try, because this is where Christian was, uh, falling over. I'm trying to address his issue here.
Not falling over, I just, I think we're sharing a certain, that maybe it's, maybe it's still worth it to try to prioritize it first and then do actionable and non-actionable simply because if we're not interested in moving forward on something, why even spend the time on it? Like if there's, some of these are one person's suggestion and we all kind of.
But I think they're kind of the same, I mean, I'm, I'm with you. It's, it's a really simple question there to say, actionable or non-actionable? And you just split it. And that's, I, I totally agree that if that was the only action item before we met again on May eighth, that's really weak. So I, I definitely agree that actionable, non-actionable split, and then I'll take that column, and that's what I was just about to, I'll take that column of whatever was left non-actionable, that then goes into Trello. And that's where those conversations and prioritization happens.
But, but are we making an assumption that all the ones that are actionable are ones that we're prioritizing?
See, correct, that's where I, I'm getting stuck on number two is, we're not, we actually have to decide whether we're going to define further what is not yet defined.
Because, because otherwise, are we saying every single thing up there is something we're including?
No. So where I'm coming from here, and this is tough because I don't have, I, I would love a whiteboard right now. This, to, to build on the whole number fraction component, we need to equalize out the work. Actionable items are fractions, they're parts, they're quarters and they're halves. The non-actionable items are whole numbers. They are not equivalent to the other items, so we have to split them out, right? So the first ones that are actionable, we put to the side, we don't need to deal with them yet. We need to look at the non-actionable ones to get them equivalent, so we need to break them down to their actionable components. Okay? Once they are broken down, then they rejoin and we bring both of those back together and then another prioritization happens. So there's an equalization and then there's a prioritization. And that's why I was saying, there's, it's just not a single vote. We are, we're weeding through and we're breaking down some. No, but does it, does that make sense to you? Does that make sense? Okay.
When is the conversation happening where we go through and address those items? Because that, that, that's what I'm wondering, are we doing that on the eighth?
Yes.
Because I thought we were trying to do that before we did prioritization because speaking to Jonathan's point of, if you're looking at something and you're not like, and you're like, what exactly is that? The conversation should happen before anyone goes into Trello and kind of starts tagging things because if you don't have a deeper understanding of what that is.
I would say Trello was going to facilitate that because the cards are not just, they're, they're a conversation piece. There's, there's work notes, you can have a running conversation. So you would be able to ask a question like that on the card. So if somebody was going to go vote on it, you would be able to type something on the card and say, hey, I have a question about X.
Are Kurt and Diane on Trello?
Everybody will be in there.
So, and just, just a thought, just throwing it out there and everyone can kind of know what their best style is or a way of doing this. One thought is that perhaps for the purpose of having a deeper understanding of some of these, I would just wonder if it's a, it's just a meeting where you kind of just go through them and Kurt just has to kind of say, this is what this is, only because I think on, if you're using a card, like, you know, maybe Kurt doesn't see that, that, you know, he isn't in that card, and I have not used Trello before, I'm sure it's much easier. I, I just want to be also considerate of Kurt and Diane and the workload that they have in trying to use that collaborative piece. I just wonder if maybe just taking the bubbles, sitting down at the table and just kind of, you know, Kurt saying, oh, you know, community gardens, don't need to worry about that right now. Or I just think that maybe, just so that we're getting at what Jonathan's original question was, which is, how do we have a deeper understanding of what's happening in these bubbles? I just wonder if maybe in this particular instance, it might just be sitting down with the bubbles and maybe Mark, we can get a whiteboard for you.
We can definitely go through all of those.
Yes, I don't know, what do, Diane and Kurt, what do you think?
We can definitely go through all of those point by point. And I can tell you in some of those, it'll take me seconds because we haven't done them at all yet. There others, what I would give, some historical background of where we are, where, you know, what we've done so far, what we're presently doing, and that'll take a couple minutes, and then we go to the next one. You know, as long as people are clear and feeling good about it, we'll keep moving. If somebody says, questions, we'll stop and we'll get into detail.
And I'm fine with using Trello. I just was, I was just thinking about the process and the work group and I just wonder if maybe just sitting down and going through it might just be the, the better way for this particular instance. But just, I don't know what everyone else thinks.
I feel like that almost saves us a step in a way, to do it that way as a whole group, to just have you say, here's where we're at.
Isn't that part of that exercise of only the one through three at the end of it? So that at the end, we even have a bit of a reference of where it's at. And we're doing both at the same time. Does it mean that same conversation, we're just discussing?
Because the first conversation doesn't take nearly as long if we're just parsing them into, well, all right, this, this clearly needs more steps. All right, so then what are the next steps? Right, that would be the follow-up question there.
So are the five of us still meeting?
Okay, so, this is why I wrote it down here, because we, we talked and we've jumped up and down a bunch of steps, okay? So here are the actual four steps. There's probably only three, it depends on what we happen in, in two. The very first one, I think, that we all agree on is they need to be sorted into action and non-action, right? The second one is we are going to, as I mentioned before, you're going to hold items that we have already agreed are actionable. We're just going to put them off to the side and we'll come back to them in a minute. In a month, in a day, whatevs. We're going to put the non-action items into something, either, either Trello for discussion and/or voting. Now, what I was hearing Mrs. Gee say is that voting shouldn't occur there. We can put them into Trello for discussion, but the card tech version of it is not going to be enough to inform voting. And so instead, that's the end of step two. We put it in for discussion, people can go in, they can take a look, they can chat on cards, do whatever it is that they want to do. But on May eighth, when we come back, we will pop open those Trello boards and we will walk through each of those cards. And we'll have administrators tell us about them so we can have full clarity. And then we vote? Is that what I'm hearing? Is that what you had in mind, Christian?
I thought, well, short of having a, a meeting before the eighth to just do this all at once, going through actionable and inactionable, having a discussion as a group and saying, hearing from Kurt and Diane saying, here's where we are, here's the steps it would take to get here. Maybe then a Trello discussion and vote. And then on the eighth, I guess the eighth is discussing the actual meaning of, discussing the actual. I suppose, I just, yeah, I suppose it is.
The way that I originally talked about it was that we would vote and then the eighth would be the presentation to the community of, here's how we voted.
Yeah, so I guess, I, I guess.
But I hear, but what I was hearing is that people wanted to walk that back a little bit and want more time to have face-to-face discussion.
I gotta say, that's what I'm hearing, is that we would maybe want to have one more face-to-face to flush these out before the presentation on the eighth.
Is it, is that, are we in line? Does that make any sense?
Or no?
I honestly just was thinking about our next Thursday night. We have not an unusually long meeting. I think we'll have a few proclamations and then the committee reports take a while to get through. We don't have a lot of action items coming. I could probably do at least a half an hour of going through stuff on Thursday evening.
Yeah.
That might be helpful.
Yeah.
I think that would be incredibly.
I'm trying to spread the work out so it's not all done in one session.
Yeah, no, I agree, I agree.
My impression of some of the items on the list is there's an awful lot of non-actionable items.
Well, that's what I feel like that five of us are going to say is, wow, the way this is written, we're going to put this in a bucket and then we'll, and then.
There's three we can look at.
So that.
And then I think the next, I think what I'm worried about is, okay, so once we've done that and then we transfer to Trello without a large group conversation, that there's still going to be more confusion about what the next step is going to be to do with these pieces and how to put them together. If the group of five isn't putting them together, then, you know, I think it's going to help to do it in a face-to-face setting with all of us prior to that May eighth meeting.
I agree, yeah.
So then next Thursday?
Yeah. Kurt could, yeah, maybe iron out 30 minutes so to go through those items.
Nineteen, thank you.
Why don't we just take it a step at a time? And on Thursday evening, I'm going to take a shot at spending probably about 30 minutes leading folks through where we stand in these various things. Some of them, like we said, will be very, very quick. Others, you know, you might have some questions or I might have a few more words to say. And then we'll take it up after that.
I'm going to take the specific May eighth off. Then we discuss the actual meeting before voting.
Well, I can do my meeting from afar.
Yeah, get your board docs now.
All right, so there's five steps up there. That means that the sorting into the two columns for each.